Good evening and welcome to the April 2016 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. If you'd help me start the meeting by joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call and recognition of visitors.
Hey, the seat needs visitors include Roberta Everslaj, Mary Gertis, Ralph D. Grotola, Dusty Sees, and Charles McAllister.
Welcome. The next item on our business is the open forum. The open forum is a period at each meeting for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There'll be one public forum comment period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which case the chair can reduce that amount. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door before each board meeting and prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel issues or matters that are being addressed through our grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise subject to review by the college or the Board of Trustees. Our only listed speaker today is John Rives, who is also the president of our Student Senate. Welcome, John. And I understand this is his open forum comments and later we will have his Student Senate report as a separate matter.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Trustees, members of the administration, faculty, staff, and student body, I will be standing up in a few moments, as you said, to give my monthly Student Senate report, but I'd like to give a particular emphasis to what I have to say now. Over the past year, we've had many conversations about the safety of our campus, but only a couple of times have I mentioned what I believe ought to be done in regards to this issue. And as president of the student body, I now feel compelled to address the Board of Trustees. Two hundred and forty years ago, our forefathers fought for and won liberty and overthrew a tyrannical king. Our Declaration of Independence claimed for us the unalienable rights of life and liberty. A few of the most basic liberties were later outlined in the Bill of Rights, which is inseparable from our Constitution. The second of these rights is the right of the people to not only keep, but also to bear arms. The constitutional rights of the people are being threatened, and idolist does not become us. The battle for liberty usually has not been fought with guns on the battlefield, but with words, in Congress, or in our state legislature, or in our city council chambers, or even in this very room among the Board of Trustees. The choice is now before you. Will you uphold the basic liberties our founding fathers fought for, or at the bidding of faculty members, will you send a representative to Topeka to lobby against these liberties? These same teachers threaten to resign should we be allowed our liberties. But I tell you, we do not need teachers, we need our unalienable rights. We should not be alienated from our constitutional right to bear arms. Even Patrick Henry, who said, "Give me liberty or give me death," did not support the Constitution until it included the Bill of Rights. And it was Benjamin Franklin who said, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Alas, there are those at this college who desire to make that trade. So I and my fellow students plead with you. Do not undermine our liberty. Press on in the defense of our freedom and do not act against it or in favor of tyranny. In fact, affirm our right to carry guns on this campus before July 1st, 2017, because the Constitution guarantees us this liberty. Thank you very much.
John, are you speaking on behalf of the Student Senate or on behalf of John Rives as a student at the college?
I can't say I'm representing the Student Senate, but I do believe I represent many students.
Okay. I know we've done surveys on campus, and that's why I was trying, wanted to make sure I understood, because I think some of our student surveys have indicated concern about the issue of weapons on campus, but obviously, we appreciate your comments and your perspective on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have awards and recognitions, and we have some pretty impressive recognitions today for some student athletes and some of our coaches and administrators, so...
Thank you, Trustee Musler.
Doctor's object?
I'd like to defer to Dr. Randy Weber. Randy?
Yeah, I'm here because our athletic director is currently at region and conference meetings out of town, so I am going to do some recognitions on behalf of athletics. First, we have four recipients here this evening that I will be discussing, but our first recognition, we have another schedule conflict, and it's our baseball coach, because he's got a game out on the field. But it is important for us to note that our baseball coach, Kent Shelley, received his 900th career win earlier this spring, and I think that that was something that they wanted us to recognize, since he's not here and we've got a full agenda, I'll skip the rest of the bio, but his 900th career win was a big achievement for both he and his team, so we're excited about that. And I'm gonna move... Next, I'm gonna move on to our student athletes that we have who have received recognition for their efforts on the court this year. First, I'll bring both of them up right now. Erica Nelson and Danzel Wright. Erica is a sophomore on our women's basketball team, and Danzel is a sophomore on the men's team, so they both have expired their eligibility, but in doing so, they accomplished some pretty good feats. So Erica is the 27th player to become NJCAA All-American, first team, 12th under Ben Conrad. She's the 16th All-American in the women's program, and, excuse me, I've got some consolidated stuff here, so I'll have to apologize. She is the 12th under Ben Conrad. She was named to the 10th Player WBCA All-America First Team. She helped the program's first undefeated season this year at 30 wins and zero losses in the regular season, and they finished their season at 31-1. She was also selected First Team All-KJCCC District 2 and Region 6. She led the Lady Cavaliers in a number of statistical categories. Her 16.6 points per average ranked third in the conference, and she was a conference leader in assists. Her freshman season, Nelson was a key performer in Johnson County's run to the national title. In the tournament, she averaged 14.5 points, seven rebounds, and 5.8 assists. Nelson is also a part of the winningest class in team history. In her two seasons, Johnson County posted a 65-3 record. Erica Nelson. Erica, well, I'm gonna put you on the spot. You decided you don't want to say anything. At least tell them where you're going to school next year.
Uh, Dean Rice, the Florida Docco's.
Our second recipient, so we've got a couple of them, I'm gonna try to get through them pretty quickly, is Mr. Danzel Wright. Danzel was named First Team and MVP of the Division 2 Kansas Jayhawk Conference. He's leaving Johnson County as one of the most prolific scorers in the program's history. His freshman season, Danzel set a new freshman scoring record with 665 points. This year, he poured in 591 points, which averaged 19.1 points per game, and finished with 1,256, second most in JCCC history. He's the 12th player ever to score over 1,000 points in a career at the college. In 1516, so this year, he led JCCC in the conference in scoring, ranked second in three-point percentage, second in three-point field goals made, first in free throws, first in free throws made, and fourth in assists. For all of this, he was recognized as a First Team All-American. Danzel? I don't think he wants to talk, and you haven't decided on school yet. Please find a good one. Alrighty, our next recipient is our women's basketball coach, Coach Ben Conrad. So for the second consecutive year, Johnson County Community College head women's basketball coach, Ben Conrad, will be receiving a National Coach of the Year award. This year, Conrad has been named the 2016 United States Marine Corps WBCA Junior Community College National Coach of the Year. He was presented the prestigious Pat Summitt Trophy at the annual WBCA Award on April 5th in Indianapolis. The Marine Corps and the WBCA present the trophy, named for legendary University of Tennessee coach, to the United States Marine Corps WBCA National Coach of the Year annually in each of the six membership divisions, NCAA Divisions 1, 2, and 3, NIA, and Junior Community College and High School. The WBCA is proud to name Ben as the 2016 Coach of the Year, said WBCA Executive Director Daniel Downhill. Ben was selected as a winner by his peers after leading his team to an exceptional season. The WBCA recognizes and applauds his leadership example that can be seen in his student athletes, institution, and community. Conrad recently completed his eighth season at the college, leading the Lady Cavs to a number-one ranking and an unblemished 30-0 record during the regular season. He's amassed an incredible record during his 14 seasons at the college, or, excuse me, as a head coach, 331 wins against 125 losses, so that's a 73% winning percentage. But he has seen even greater heights at JCCC, leading the program to a 238-33 mark, winning 88% of his games here at the college. He's just one win shy of taking over as the all-time wins leader in the program's history. Coach Ben Conrad.
I do wanna thank all the administrators and board members that are here. You guys, what you guys do for us and the value you place on what we do means everything too, so we really appreciate you. Thank you. And I also want to thank that really good player right there that went 65-3 in the last few years. Pretty good. Thank you.
Our last athletic award of the evening is gonna be for our longest-tenured individual at the college, so Tyler, come on down. So Tyler's receiving the NJCAA Service Award. Founded in 1959, the NJCAA Service Award is the most-tenured honor handed out by the association. It is given to those, most often not an athlete, who have made significant contributions to two-year college athletics on a national level for an extended period of time. Annually, one service award can be reserved for a member of the media. No more than four service awards can be presented in a given year. This year's recipient was Tyler Kundith. He received his award at the NJCAA meeting in Colorado Springs. Tyler's in his 25th year at the college, 24th as Sports Information Director, coordinates all media relations for the athletic department's 15 sports, and in 2008, he was inducted into the JCCC Athletics Hall of Fame. During his tenure, he's provided publicity for 11 national championship teams, 74 teams with a top-five finish at Nationals, 96 regional district championship teams. He's won 221 national awards for publications and writing, including 204 by COSIDA. He has had 104 publications judged best in nation, 99 by COSIDA. He just finished among the top five in the country for total awards 12 times, or he has 12 times in his career, and led the country four times. He served 14 years on the COSIDA Publications Committee, served as vice chair from 2009 to 2012, and in the fall of 2012, he was promoted to chair. He's also served three years on the Academic All-America Committee. At the 2015 convention, he was elected to a prestigious three-year term on COSIDA Board of Directors. He is the first two-year representative to serve on that board. Please join me in congratulating Tyler.
I feel very fortunate to work at an amazing school, to be able to do this for 25 years, and with the coaches that I've been able to work with, student athletes, and the people I work with at the college is amazing. This is a great, great school. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Tyler, and Erica, Danzel, and Ben for representing our college in exemplary fashion. After seeing one of the teams that you played this year, and the behavior of that team, and the coach, and all, I gotta tell you, Ben, your team represents us in just incredible fashion, something we can all be proud of, and thank you all for the respect of the game. That's so important, so thank you very much. All right. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. As you know, well, I hope you know, the college is really well-known across the nation for our debate team. Every year, they do have outstanding records. I always, I kinda dread, I sympathize with the coaches, because they have to keep turning out outstanding teams, and they keep doing it. This year, I want, we want to recognize Eric Singleton and Casey Owens, who are coached by Justin Stanley and Daniel Stout. And coaches, you gotta stand up too. Everybody gets to stand up here. As a team, they had a 5-3 preliminary record and advanced to the doubles as the top overall 5-3 seed in the national tournament. The preliminary rounds, they had victories over teams from Binghamton University of New York, James Madison University, Kansas City Kansas Community College, Arizona State University, and the University of Oklahoma. Eric Singleton was recognized as the seventh speaker in the country. There were over 220 debaters in attendance. This is especially impressive, because he started the academic as a novice last year. This is also the highest speaker award in the history of Johnson County Community College debate. Casey Owen finished as the 21st speaker. He's now the second-highest speaker in school history. Their accomplishments this year have been outstanding. We want to recognize you and thank you for representing the college so well. Thank you.
All right, cool, I'll make it short. So I really need to thank those two men over there, because as you said, I was a novice last year, which means that I just walked onto the team, it's my first time ever. Generally speaking, the people that we were competing against have had, you know, upwards of like seven years of debate experience by that time, so it was really tough, but walking onto the squad, I had no idea what debate was about at all, and honestly, really didn't have any direction as far as what I was gonna do academically. I still didn't know what I wanted to do, and those two over there provided me the opportunity to be able to explore a lot of different literature and do some very deep research that has put me in a really interesting spot. I think that, after one of the rounds, the judge came up to me and told me that I had a professor's level of understanding about the literature that I was reading. He thought that I could be a professor in the very near future, which was very eye-opening for me. And a lot of the times, people say that debaters at the top level do enough work over the year to produce a master's thesis. So definitely put in a whole lot of work this year, and it was very academically rigorous, but I think that we came out with more to take from than just an award, but rather enough tools to be able to continue our academic careers in very successful places, so thank you all for the opportunity.
Can't really top that very well. But of course, my thanks do go out to Justin and Dan, but most of all, it would probably have to go out to Eric, because honestly, going into this tournament, it was a phenomenal feat that Eric pulled off, managing what he did and all the work he put in over the season. But realistically, our partnership formed at the district qualifier only a few tournaments before. We hadn't planned on this for the entire year. It kinda just ended up getting scrapped together, and it was an amazing experience for me to be able to participate and watch, but ultimately, it did come down to Eric's fundamental understanding and ability to engage in the way he does, so I would have to give most of my thanks out to Eric for his great job this tournament and throughout the year. Thank you.
What was your sweetest win?
That's interesting. I really can't say, because a lot of the year, some of the people that we had beat have been almost rivals for us. They've been very bitter enemies, and so every single one of them was very sweet and solid.
Thank you all so much for representing our college. Feel free to go practice basketball, basketball, sports information, and debate. Thank you very much. Not only did we beat Oklahoma in debate, we were still undefeated against them in football. It's amazing when you, I wish the rest of this meeting would be as articulate as Eric and Casey, where it's impressive, and I know that faculty members here and that the faculty members here out the campus turn out those kind of kids over and over again, and it makes you proud to be part of the effort, the little part that we play up here. So thank you all for what you do. John, you wanna come back up and give us the Student Senate report? Is this your final?
Yes, it is.
We still have May. This is your final?
Well, I would like to thank you again for allowing me to come speak on behalf of Student Senate. We've had a standout year, and I've been honored to work with many people at this college, students, employees of this college, and especially the Board of Trustees. With just a month left in the school year, Student Senate is still quite active, working on a lot of different projects and events. One of the last events we will be hosting this semester will happen this Monday. In place of our regular General Assembly meeting at noon, we will be hosting a Town Hall-style meeting with Dining Services. We've invited Jake Latsch and several other Dining Services employees to meet with students and to hear their ideas and concerns. We also have three ad hoc committees working right now. One of these committees has been working with bookstore management to evaluate bookstore policies, and another committee has been looking at ad drop policy and class scheduling. We've been working with Paul Kyle, and he's been really amazing to work with, you know, great resource. This year, Student Senate has distributed all of the $38,000 we are allotted to different organizations on campus, and there have been so many extraordinary things that the organizations have been able to do. It's difficult for me to select just a couple, but I would like to mention just a few, because they really are amazing. One really cool thing is Engineering Club has been able, twice, to go get a behind-the-scenes engineering tour with the lead engineer at World's for Fun, and, you know, both times they came back with, you know, really amazed, and it's a great opportunity, you know, for career-related tour. The Graphic Design Club hosted a senior showcase, as they do every year, for their students' work, and at this event, students are able to gain community and industry recognition, and often receive awards and jobs, and Student Senate was able to help fund that also. And the final one I wanted to tell you about was the Culinary Quiz Bowl team that we have. They recently traveled to Hawaii to compete nationally. So, a lot of really cool things going on with clubs, and that's just a few, that's barely the tip of the iceberg. A couple of weeks ago, we held elections for next year's Executive Board members, and none of them were able to attend tonight, but those elected were Donnie Witten for President, Amanda Wong for Vice President, Ali Zanotti for Secretary, Frankie Zhang for Treasurer, and Alex Rowe for Parliamentarian. And the new Executive Board will take over at the beginning of the fall semester. I'm really excited for the new officers. I'm very confident that they'll do an excellent job with Student Senate. As I mentioned before, this is my final Board of Trustees report, and you've been a great group to work with, and I'm going to miss the role of president because of all the, excuse me, because of all the amazing people here. I've come to see that this board really is a major part of what makes JCCC a really great school, so thank you very much.
You're very kind, John. Any questions?
So, I do have one question. So, what do you want to do when you get big?
Well, a really cool opportunity opened, I was actually running for reelection for Student Senate President, and I lost, but because of that, a really cool opportunity opened with a maintenance job at a summer camp that, you know, is managing, and so my major being automotive technology, that's a really cool opportunity for me. I think I'll continue to pursue automotive technology and hopefully eventually own a business someday.
Good. Thanks for your service and wish you the very best. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
John, always remember that many great leaders have lost elections and have bounced back, so there's an opportunity ahead for you. I want to thank you for your leadership this past year. You've taken on some really tough issues, you've been a pleasure to work with, and you'll be missed, so good luck, John.
Thank you very much.
I think the Town Hall meetings that you sponsored through the year, and nobody understands all the volunteer service that you and the board gives, and some of the pure charitable things you do that are not necessarily directly related to the campus, but make us a better place because of what the students do, and your leadership was very much appreciated. We will miss you every year. We miss the outgoing Student Senate President. We get one seemingly just as good every year, and it's a tribute to the Senate as to who the students elect, so thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, now, everybody hold on to your seats, we're gonna move into something really exciting. It's the 2016-2017 Budget Workshop. Rachel, we've had our materials for a while, and I know you're gonna give a presentation, and we have opportunity for questions now, and I know you'll go through the timetable, with the ultimate goal of adopting a budget in August after the official public hearing.
Yes, that's the legal budget. Actually, the management budget, though, will have an extra item on next month at the meeting. Did you have anything that you wanted to say?
I just wanted to thank members of the board and all of the individuals that have contributed to getting us to this point. As you know, this is the culmination of a lot of thought and effort by many people across the college. We have over 120 budget administrators that work toward this. I want to especially thank members of the President's Cabinet for their hours of deliberation and work, and the Financial Services Team, particularly Chandra Russell, our budget coordinator here, and Rachel Lear's for her leadership in this process. Rachel is our Associate Vice President for Financial Services and CFO, and she and her staff have done an extraordinary job. So with that, I will turn it over to Rachel. Thank you.
May I ask for a clarification? I think some people here, 120 budget administrators, they think of 120 people sitting in a room with cubicles. These are people distributed among departments all over campus that are responsible for the budget in their area.
That's correct.
So, I don't want to leave the wrong impression out there.
All right, great, well, thank you. And I'd like to start our time tonight by reviewing this document, and I think all the trustees have a hard copy. We'll put it up on the screen for the other folks here in the room, and we will put it on the college's website tomorrow, so if you're interested in further review of the material to be able to do so. It is kind of a long document, nearly 100 pages, so we'll move pretty quickly through the material, hit the highlights, and then I'd like to summarize with just a few PowerPoint slides at the end, so. I'd like to begin, and I think it's important to begin, with just a quick look at the college's mission, vision, and values. And again, these were developed back in 2014 in connection with the college's strategic planning efforts at the time. And again, very simply, you know, the reason that we're here tonight is just because we hope that we build a budget that best helps the college to advance its mission to inspire learning, so that's why we start off by sharing that material. The next slide here, and I apologize, my screen resolution isn't great, is a more detailed look at the strategic goals and tasks that we've shared with this group many times, and I think as we move through the materials tonight, you'll be able to see some specific examples of how our strategic goals and tasks inform some of our resource allocation decisions. Specifically, we'll talk about things like student success initiatives under Goal 1. We'll talk about expansion, planned expansion of web-based instructional options for next year under Goal 2, and then of course, facilities utilization and facilities master planning under Goal 4, the strategic plan. So again, that's just a little bit more about how those strategic items continue to inform our budget process as we move throughout the year. Okay, next on page 6, we have a look at our preliminary budget guidelines, and these were adopted by the board back in December, so a lot of this material we've already covered. These were the initial assumptions for revenues and expenditures, including our initial estimate of increases in assessed valuation and enrollment. The tuition cost for credit hour has already been established and approved for next year with the rates by residency, state aid, and expenditure budgets as well. So, the only, if you flip forward to page 6, I just wanted to highlight in bold print there, the only two of those initial guidelines that we've changed have been shared with the Management Committee previously, and I wanted to mention them tonight. Those were the estimates for assessed valuation, which we kinda went into the process saying we anticipate about a 4% increase in the county's assessed valuation for next year. We've since, based on some more updated information, bumped that up to a 6.5% planned increase in assessed valuation for next year. in assessed valuation for next year, and then have also tweaked slightly our estimate for enrollment. Our original budget guidelines, we had planned for about a 1% decrease, but have continued to monitor enrollment trends through the spring semester and really feel more comfortable now, I think, taking a little bit more conservative approach on next year's budget and planning around a 3% decrease in credit enrollment for next year. Okay? The next couple pages are just a quick look at the budget cycle calendar. As Barbara mentioned, there are a lot of people around campus involved in this process that put a lot of time and effort into the development of the college's budget. We started a long time ago, back in September. This is now almost a 12-month cycle, continuous process. If you fast-forward to where we are today, April 21st, our workshop, of course, at the May Board Meeting, we'll move forward with a recommendation on the management budget, and then, as Greg, as you mentioned, the legal budget, then we'll take approval later in the summer, in August after the public hearing, so. Any questions on the calendar? All right, so moving into the numbers, we'll start with our revenue assumptions, and I'm primarily going to focus on the general and the post-secondary technical education funds, which we'll call the, commonly refer to as the PTE Fund, because that is the largest component of the college's budget. Of course, we're required to maintain many different funds within our accounting system, but this is...these are the primary operating dollars of the college within the general PTE Fund. So, on this first page, the pie chart, sources of revenue, does reflect that the local funding base for the college remains strong with the ad valorem tax revenue projected to be 61% of total general fund revenue next year. That's property taxes and motor vehicle included in that figure. The second-largest component of our revenue remains tuition and fees, which will be about 22% of our estimated revenue for next year, and then the state aid, state funding, about 15%, which is the yellow component there on the graph. We do have a small amount of interest in other income, which is about $2.5 million. That is the final component of the revenue sources for the college. The next page shows the revenue sources on a 10-year, with 10-year history. So, you've got actual dollars from '08 to fiscal '15, last year. This year's budget, fiscal '16 and fiscal '17. So, again, I think it's interesting to look at the trend information over time. If you start at the top and start with funding, you can see that four years ago, that represented about 18% of the general fund budget. Next year, we're planning for that to be approximately 15% of our revenue, as we saw in the pie chart. The green component in the middle is the tuition and fee revenue, so that's actually decreased from about 25% four years ago to 22% planned for next year, and then the ad valorem dollars have continued to increase largely based on increases in growth and assessed valuation in recent years. So, we talked about all of our sources of revenue. Now, I'd like to spend just a little bit of time kind of pulling those apart and just a few comments about each item, starting with the state funding plan for next year. This schedule was received from K-Bor in June of last year. We will receive a similar notification in June of this year with our proposed '17 distribution. You can see that this...the amount on this schedule is $21.5 million for the college. We have continued to approach our budget more conservatively and planning for a reduction off that number of 5% in our budget. So, when you look at the budget, you don't see 21.5 for state funding, you'll see about $20.5 million planned for the general fund. This schedule also lists the other community colleges, technical colleges, and Washburn Institute of Technology as well. Page 15 shows, again, what we call the tier and the non-tier credit hour distributions from the state or the operating grant. This is highlighted in yellow here. It also includes a couple of other sources of funding that the college receives from the state. In the middle of the graph, the vocational education, capital outlay distribution, and the technology grant are about $368,000. Those are components of the state's Economic Development Initiatives Fund. And then over to the left is the Senate Bill 155 funding of $556,000. And again, I wanted to point out that this is information that was received in June of last year, so this...that's only the Senate Bill 155 funding for one semester. You have to submit your student census data, they check the courses, et cetera, and that was the amount of funding that was approved for that semester. So, if you were looking at the entire year, the SB 155 funding would be almost double that. Does that make sense? Any questions on any of that? Again, we've got the other schools listed, the community and technical colleges, and the colleges as well. So, we talked about state funding, and then moving on into the local funding, again, this is information that I think we've shared before, the 10-year history of the assessed valuation and the college's mill levy. Got the percentage increase included here, so again, here's that 6.5% anticipated increase for next year. The college's levy, we're proposing in the budget to remain flat with where it currently is, and this would be actually the third consecutive year for the tax levy to remain consistent.
I think it was 12. Yeah, I think it was 13, as Mr. Seale said.
Two charts at the bottom of the page just simply help to visualize, I think, over time, the fluctuations in both. All right? Moving forward, we have another chart. This...actually, I have to admit, I think this one is mislabeled. We labeled it the general PTE Fund, but it actually does include the other components of our tax levy, which is our capital outlay fund, in the green at the top, and then the very narrow wedge for the special assessments fund. So, again, if you look at this revenue source in total outside of the general fund, for all funds, the ad valorem revenue will be approximately $92 million for next year. We've got the tax levy kind of laid up here at the top of the graph. You can see the increase in moving into fiscal '14 there, slight decrease the subsequent year, and then the flat level there out. All right, so next, we have just a quick picture of what the estimated tax amount would be for the average...on the average appraised value of the college's tax levy. So, this is based on information that we received from the county appraiser. We simply said if the mean appraised value is increasing from $250,000 to $262,000, based on the residential assessment rate and a flat mill levy, would be about $13 in additional tax next year for residents located within the district. And of course, this doesn't contemplate any of the additional levies, the school district, city or county government. This would be the college's component only. All right, so we talked about the state funding sources, the local funding, and now I wanted to spend a little bit of time on our tuition revenue projections for next year. We've talked about credit enrollment and the fact that we've now kind of updated our estimate, planning around a 3% decrease. Of course, we hope to exceed that, and have talked about a lot of enrollment management and retention strategies to that effect, and one of them being the metro rate, and I'll talk a little bit about more...about that a little bit more in a minute, but I think this helps to kind of show over time, especially when you look at the graph here, the inverse relationship between improving economic conditions and what you typically see a community college enrollment, meaning that if unemployment is low, people are back to work and not in the classroom. So, with that, these are, again, the tuition rates planned for next year. We've got the current year rates listed for '15-'16, and then moving into '16-'17, again, based on residents, not only the per-credit hour cost, but what that price tag looks like for 30 credit hours. So again, we had the $2 increase for county residents, $4 for residents of other Kansas counties, and then $6 increase for out-of-state residents. The metro rate component being new, and of course, that is for students residing in bordering counties in Missouri, such that they would be paying the rate of $135 per credit hour versus the 214 out-of-state rate. Simply for comparison purposes, we've got the credit hour rates for last year available for KU and K-State, as well as local community colleges, Metropolitan and KCK. Metropolitan does not currently have a metro rate. KCK's is 133, which is right in line with what we're proposing for next year. All right? Okay, next, we have a series of graphs, and these begin on Page 21 of the 10-year history of the tuition and fees per credit hour. So, we spend a lot of time talking about, well, tuition's $93 per credit hour. Technically, it isn't. It's $77 per credit hour, and we have $16 of mandatory fees. We'll talk about those in a little bit, but I just thought this was interesting to be able to show over time for county residents, the impact of tuition and fee increases on their price, their total price. So, there hasn't been a lot of activity over time on the fee side. On the tuition, we've seen everything from a $2 increase, you know, to a $6 increase there in the '09-20-10 timeframe. The next slide is the Kansas residents, so this reflects the $4 tuition increase for them from '90 to '94. The fees are the same. I think historically, what you've seen is a tuition rate increase would have been applied the same for all residency statuses, and this year, we tried to more intentionally look at those separately and price those accordingly. So, whereas we saw the $2 increase for a county resident, we've got $4 here for other residents of other counties, and then this being the out-of-state rate, the $6 increase planned for next year. All right, we talked a little bit about the required fees or mandatory fees of $16 per credit hour, and this is just a quick look at what those are. These are...none of this revenue goes into the college's general fund, so student activity fee money that's segregated into our student activity fund, and that makes funds available for scholarships and athletic programs. A lot of the student programs that we heard about recently when we were doing our awards and recognitions, a lot of that activity is funded by those fee dollars. The college's debt reduction fee has been in place for a number of years. $5 per credit hour obviously helps us to meet our debt service obligations on our outstanding revenue bonds. The parking and roads fee is obviously to help maintain the parking garages and driving services around campus, and then our sustainability fee has been in place since the spring of '10, and helps to provide the sustainability initiatives, the various sustainability initiatives that we see around campus. So, that's just a quick look at those. Not a lot of change here in recent years, and nothing...no increases proposed for next year as well. All right, next, we have a quick look at our course fees. So, these are credit courses only. The college currently doesn't charge any lab fees. This is the complete list of our credit course fees, and they're primarily centered around the floral and horticulture programs. As you can see at the top, various of the music offerings in the middle, and then fees associated with railroad technology programs at the bottom of the list. So, just thought that was interesting to share. That revenue does come into the general fund along with the tuition associated with those All right, our next schedule is information that's actually provided by the College Board. And I know we shared this last year, that may have been the first time that you have seen this, but this looks at the average published tuition price by state for two-year college, and I have to scroll down to get to Kansas. I think 44th overall is where the average price is for the state of Kansas, and really, if you look at that price of $27.93, it's right in line with the 30 credit hour cost here at JCC. So, that does rank Kansas among the more affordable states for two-year college. That is all the information I have to kind of reinforce or to detail the revenue assumptions. Did you pause there?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Sure.
Not a question, but, Joe, maybe it's a comment. You know, back to the public two-year colleges and the cost, there's a lot of discussion about should community colleges be tuition-free? I'm sorry, reduce tuition so that the student doesn't pay that amount? I find it interesting that I think Tennessee is one of those states that has tuition free. Is that not correct?
Yes.
And yet, their cost is $4,103, twice the cost, almost, well, not quite twice the cost of Johnson County Community College. I just say that to point out that it's misleading to me for the public to think that there's a movement to have tuition-free school, when yet in Tennessee, when there's no tuition charged to the students, somebody is still paying $4,000 in that regard for two-year colleges.
No question, just a comment.
Anything else before we move on into the expenses?
Certainly, ask questions at each break if you want, or we can save them, questions and comments at the end. This is an opportunity to get comments back to the staff before our May meeting, when we will adopt the management budget.
Mr. Chair, I do have one comment then, and it's really not for the staff or for the administration, but I think for the public. When we look at our tuition rate going up in the last 10 years as it has, and state revenue declining, we show 10-year history of 18% now projecting down to 15%, but I do believe we're at, at one time, a high of 25% or 27% state revenue. And so, again, it's just a point that as state revenue declines for community colleges, the natural reaction, I guess, is either local tax or tuition going up, and you've done a nice job, Rachel, of explaining both of those points, because our tuition is up about 57%. If you look at the $43 rate excluding fees to $77, so again, just a comment.
And trustee Cook, that's kind of a national trend here, as the cost for going to school is being transferred to the individual, and it's not perceived as society, as they have historically provided for higher education. So, if you look at some of those, for example, Arizona now is zero state funding, so you know all that has been transferred to the student themselves.
All right, we'll move on into the detail on our expenditure budgets for next year. Similar to the revenue side, I wanted to start off with just a very simple pie graph to show that similar to most all other colleges and universities, the salary benefits remains to be the most significant component of the operating budget. That number is anticipated to be around 76% of the total for next year. The next-largest component of our budget is our, what we call our current operating dollars, which is everything from utilities and supplies to travel budgets. All of those sorts of things are represented there in the green shaded area, and then our capital expenditure for next year is budgeted at about $6.5 million, or approximately 4% of our general fund budget, leaving about 1% for debt service, principal and interest obligations from the general fund. Once again, similar to what we have shown on the revenue side, this is the 10-year look at expenditure history. Again, it's important to remember that the '08 to '15 figures are actual, the '16 and '17s were budgeted. We will not spend that entire budgeted amount, so when you see those last two columns on the right looking so much higher, keep in mind those are budgeted amounts only. We expect to expand about 93% to 95% of that total. Over time, again, salaries and benefit costs have remained fairly consistent. They've decreased slightly, but remain the primary component of the budget. Operating dollars have fluctuated, you know, 16% to 19% of the budget, and then the capital expenditures were pulled back for a number of years. You can see there in the middle of the graph, and we've worked to expand that investment in the last two years. The next chart is something that I know is new to being included in the budget materials, and I first wanted to explain all the acronyms on the top of the page. That's always confusing. I have to read this. Integrated Post-Secondary Education Data System is the U.S. Department of Education's survey tool that they use to require- survey tool that they use to require colleges and universities to submit information on core expenditures. I think this is interesting. We spend a lot of time, when we talk about our budget, we talk about it, salaries, operating, and capital. So, we're looking at accounts. This is looking at it by function. So, what function at the college are these dollars serving? And so, we would expect to see, and we do see, that instruction is the largest component. That includes the instructional salaries and the instructional operating dollars. So, this is just a different way to look at your expenditures. This has become a management tool that we have used in the past couple of years to benchmark JCC against a group of peer institutions, to look at our core expenditure by FTE and kind of see, you know, how we stack up versus that peer universe. I think it's interesting, in this past year, we've been able to slightly pull back on that per FTE expenditure, and certainly hope to continue to do so in the future while, you know, continuing to make sure that the largest components of this exercise continue to be instruction, student services, academic support, all those student success areas that we reference in our strategic plan, KPIs, et cetera. This helps us to measure and quantify some of that. The next couple pages are just glossary of terms. If you're interested into going back into iPads and looking to see what is counted in each category, I won't spend any time on that. Moving forward then to page 35, what we have here is a summary of all the funds. Again, I talk primarily about the general PTE fund. This is all the funds that the college maintains. This is what our legal budget looks like. So, we're required to report by fund, and then this concept of unencumbered cash to roll that forward, that being the reserve levels by fund. So, we've also got our adult sub-fund on here, which is the continuing ed component primarily of the college. The motorcycle and truck driver education funds are shown here. Our auxiliary unit, which includes the bookstore and dining services, and then the student activity fund as well, we mentioned that. Restricted and other funds includes a lot of our scholarships and federal grant programs. That's why that number is so big. Those dollars just kind of pass through. They come in and go back out. So, this schedule basically tells you, this is what our reserves would look like at the end of next year if we were to expend all of our budgeted dollars. That doesn't happen. We spend, we know historically, we spend between 75% in some funds of the budget to about 95% in the general fund. So, again, this is just a schedule that we use to prepare the legal budget and to show the activity outside of the general fund. This is just a quick, and on the next page, where am I, 36 in your book? Comparative budgets for general fund for, we've got 15 actual, so last fiscal year, alongside of our amended budget for this year, which was $142 million, our estimated actual spend for this year, and then the proposed budget for next year. I think it's, the most important thing to notice here is kind of the change in presentation. So, for '16 and '17, you'll notice this concept of use of reserves in the revenue section to adopt a balanced budget instead of one that's out of balance where the reserves are larger than the revenue. We've used that to illustrate areas where we've got one-time planned use of reserves and to show the funding source for that. At the very bottom of the sheet, we see the contribution to reserves. So, last year in fiscal '15 in the general fund, we contributed about $7.5 million to reserves. This year, the estimate is about $5 million, and next year, that number is probably be around $3 million, even after some reserve spending for some one-time projects, which we'll talk about here in the slides. Next page, we have our auxiliary fund, and this is just included in here because it is the next single largest individual fund, and also, it gets a lot of attention because of the bookstore and the dining services operations. This shows their revenue and their expenditures, salaries, cost of goods, inventory, and all those sorts of things. And this does indicate that we do anticipate to continue to spend down reserves in our auxiliary fund operations for next fiscal year.
Rachel?
Yes.
What percentage of the budget do we spend on?
85%. So, the difference between the budget column here and their estimated is about 15%. But we are still budgeting for their expenditures to exceed the revenue. Okay, next, we have a schedule of the college's debt obligations. This represents not only the general fund, but all of the outstanding debt of the college, principal and interest. We talked about this a lot in the past year, it seems like, because we worked to refinance these 2006 bonds, which are reflected down here as the 15 revenue bonds. Also issued the Series 2016 General Obligation Capital Outlay Bonds, so that line is new. But I just thought it was important to note that all the principal and interest for all the college's outstanding debt is budgeted as part of the budget cycle in each respective fund. Okay, the next slide, it's something that you see if you look at the treasures report every month. This is a monthly representation of the college's cash flow, and this is just something that we use for our planning purposes, and it again reinforces, I think, what we talk about a lot as far as December being the point in the college's fiscal year where our cash reserves are the lowest. And that's simply due to the timing of ad valorem and tuition receipts in January. So, just to look at monthly cash flow, and again, it's a three-year history of fiscal '14, '15, and '16. So, I would like to stop there as far as the book, because the rest of the book is very detailed. It is the budget for every cost center on campus and the detail of our capital schedule. So, all the capital items that we plan to purchase are listed in the back. If you had any questions on any of that during your review, we could talk about those now. Otherwise, I think we can move on to other slides.
Any questions on the capital items listed? They get into great detail, into chairs and desks and smaller items like that that add up to serious money, but doesn't look like there are any questions, so.
Okay. All right. And this is just, like I said earlier, a way that I'd like, kind of just like summarize all that information that we just went through really quickly. Again, highlights from the revenue side. We've talked about our total revenue is projected to grow by only 2.8% next year in the general fund. Primarily, that's driven by assessed valuation growth. We're actually budgeting a decrease in tuition revenue due to the planned decrease in credit hours. And again, we've got other initiatives in place to hopefully address and exceed that projection, but that is what is included in the budget as of this time. And we've planned our state funding to remain consistent with where it is right now, which again, is a planned 5% reduction from the proposed amount. Moving on into the expenses, this is just a little bit of extra detail on some of the salary and budget information that was presented in the workbook. Just to note that salary budgets include an average 2.75% increase as negotiated in the master agreement for faculty members, and a 2% salary increase per staff, as well as it does provide adjustments for certain staff positions that were identified in compensation studies, I believe in 2013 and in 2014. So, we'll be moving to address some of those things. The medical insurance costs included in the budget do include an increase of approximately 10%. The college's component of the cost increase is about 75% of the 10%, meaning that the employees then, their approximate medical cost increase would be 25% of the 10. And then, the positions, we don't have any proposed increase in the total number of full-time positions. However, we have funded some positions from vacant lines within our budget as listed in the bullet points. So, those include 16 full-time faculty positions, a police officer that was funded through a grant that is now ending, and that position is being transferred to the general fund, police sergeant position, director for our new collaboration center in the OCB space to provide some leadership and community engagement in that new area, six student success advocates, which are being created, those positions being created utilizing current part-time positions, and then, three full-time coaching positions being created using existing part-time spots. Yes?
Greg, if I can make a comment, I would like to say that we vetted this pretty thoroughly at our management committee meeting, and I believe, as Rachel indicated, the whole budget is driven by our strategic plan. You recall when Rachel showed you the strategic plan at the beginning of the workbook, goal four deals with efficient use of resources, and the task under there talks about utilization, proper utilization of faculty. And this is a good example where we have used, we've reallocated positions from vacated positions to beef up our security and safety, as well as the six student success advocates really deal with helping students in the teaching learning process to be more efficient and effective, and to help them work through certificate or career completion. So, I just wanted to point that out, that that's a good example, I think, of the administration and staff's work of using the strategic plan, which sometimes gets shelved after it's nice and glossy, but it's really, at this campus at least, used as a working tool to drive the budget, so I appreciate that.
Any other comments on this slide? All right. Couple of additional notes on planned expenditures for next year. If you just look at our operating lines, those remain generally consistent. There are some known increases that have already been built into the budget, of course, for things like insurance premiums, some of our contracts primarily in the information services area we know will increase next year, and we have a planned increase for utilities. I believe around 2% already included in our budget assumptions. Our capital budgets, we talked about that. That's about $6.5 million next year in the general fund. That provides for replacement equipment as well as new equipment. A large component of that is spent in the IT area. We do continue to allocate about $3 for every credit hour towards IT infrastructure and equipment related to that. So, that's the first two items on the list. We have a replacement of existing equipment, and that's dictated by the replacement cycles that our folks in procurement and purchasing track for things like vehicles, office equipment, et cetera. That's a placeholder line in the budget. When we talk about remodels and renovations, we had a list of many projects that were requested. We have funded a variety of those. The largest single item, however, was the first floor restroom in the OCB. It's about $150,000. We always budget for classroom painting and carpeting, as you can see there on the list. And then, we've also got a placeholder for office painting and carpeting for next year as well. And my understanding is some of that office carpeting is quite dated, so we're excited to be able to improve some of those areas.
Does that include the FA president's office?
I have not checked.
Okay, we hope so.
I think it was at our last board meeting, we actually talked about the faculty credentialing changes coming forward from the Higher Learning Commission, and the question was asked if that would be a cost of the college? And it is, and that has been estimated at $200,000 and is included in the budget for next year. Strategic plan initiatives, if you think back to the very beginning, that slide with all the strategic goals and tasks on it talked about continued expansion of online programming. So, we've got $172,000 identified for that, which will provide for part-time staffing and other instructional materials to continue to ramp up our online offerings. The collaboration center operating budget is in place, and then, we do have $600,000 worth of contingency funds built into the budget to continue to address unforeseen circumstances or really any growth or innovation opportunities as well that would pop up during the year next year. So, those are all components of the general fund budget as well. So, finally, we talked about use of reserves to fund some one-time strategic initiatives in the budget for next year. And because we have been able to contribute to reserves for the last three fiscal years, we've got some flexibility within our budget to do so. So, this is just a list. There are three capital items, as well as planned year two of our retirement incentive program listed here. The total's $5.3 million. The details of the retirement incentive program will be very consistent with what we experienced this year. We're planning for, you know, maybe around 60 folks. The budget is built on an estimate of 60 folks taking advantage of that opportunity. The digital cameras, I think, speak to improvements in safety and security. That not only allows us to improve our current technology from analog to digital, but it would add about 130 cameras to the campus. The $1 million for classroom improvements is a placeholder amount in the budget next year to address recommendations from the faculty and staff team that has been tasked with developing the classroom of the future, and any recommendations that they might have for next year, we'll be able to begin to address. And then, the last item, architectural engineering services, that's simply an estimate of an 8% fee on a $25 million project, just kind of a starting point, placeholder, if you will, to begin to address items associated with the Phil Sibley's master plan. The firm that we have engaged, Smith Group, they were on campus this week. They'll be back, I think, May 9th and 10th. We'll continue to, you know, receive information from them, hopefully late summer, begin to really see what that kind of looks like and what that feels like. And so, having this included in the budget would provide us with the ability to move forward on some of their recommendations next year. All right? Again, this is similar information to what we saw in the book. This is budget trend only. We talked about the fact that in previous years, the budget that has been, that was adopted was out of balance, so the expenditures were budgeted more than the revenue, but it was planned to only expend 91% or 92% of that total. We've switched the presentation on that, so instead of adopting a budget that's out of balance, we're reflecting a contribution from reserves to help to balance the budget to fund the projects that I just, that were listed on the previous slide.
The importance of that, though, is that without sufficient reserves, we would be $4.2 million short this year and $4.8 million short next year.
Yes.
Because reserves seem to be a topic in Topeka as to whether or not people have too much. We use those for one-time strategic goals.
Again, these were the budgeted figures. So, on the next slide, we have the actual. So, in '15, our budget was $140 million. The actual spending was only 91% of that, or $127 million. For this year, we'll probably expend about 93% of our budget. For next year, even with those projects identified, we'll spend about 95% of that probably. Still be able to contribute between $2 and $3 million to reserves, I think, by the end of, the end of the year.
And Rachel, that increase there in the capital line, that's due to the fact that we amended the budget midway through the year.
So, the 7.4, that's a good point. And this year's estimated capital includes not only the performing arts renovations, but the OCB space was $1 million, too. So, that's why that kind of spikes up and then goes back down. Okay? Speaking of reserves, the next slide is a projection of reserve balances at December 31 for each year listed. And again, if you think back to that cash flow graph, the reason we always talk about December 31st is because it's the low point in the year, and our policy indicates that as of the low point in the year, we still won't have reserves that are less than 10% of our total budget. And this slide indicates that even with planned expenditure reserves, we will still continue to be within the board policy. That's the general fund. The next slide looks at the capital outlay fund, kind of the same concept. And again, we know that we bonded against our capital outlay revenue dollars for next year. We do have debt service, as well as other planned expenditures included in the expense numbers on the slide. But what this says, that even with a fairly, I think, fairly conservative assumption in assessed valuation increase of just 3% per year after next year, that the capital outlay fund balance would continue to grow and hopefully provide some flexibility or some funding for potential facilities plans down the road. All right, the last slide, remaining budget timeline. Next month, at the board meeting, we'll be asking to move forward with this budget. This is the management budget, which simply allows us to conduct business effective July 1st. In July, then, we'll publish our notice of hearing, which is the one page of the legal budget announcing- notice of hearing, which is the one page of the legal budget announcing that we will hold a public hearing in August and move forward with the legal budget at that time. So that's all I have. Any other questions?
That's all?
Lot of information. Yes, anything else?
Questions from the board?
Clarify?
I think it's important for the public that views this, those of you in the room, to raise questions with the administration or with the board, if you have questions about the budget. Board members, I would strongly encourage us to raise questions with Rachel or Barbara between now and May, so that there aren't surprises as we get to the management budget in May. I know three of the board members on the management committee have gone through this in detail. The rest of us have heard the presentation for the first time. I'm going to just make a couple comments. I'm going to urge us all to look at, this isn't to make changes, but I think for future, page 13, which is the revenue trend, page 31, which is the expense trend, and page 95, which is the reserve trend. And then there was another one in there, page 19, which is the credit hours, because it is a concern of mine, and it's not sustainable for this college to continue to increase revenues from taxpayers and students and other forms, and increase expenditures in all levels, and have the number of students continue to go down. It's simply not sustainable. In addition, I think we are carefully monitoring our reserves so that we have sufficient reserves to meet emergencies and to do the strategic plan items that we think we're going to need, not just for facilities planning, but curriculum and other things, but understanding that those reserves become a target from somebody else that doesn't have money and isn't as prudent and careful in their finances as we've been. We're blessed to have a community that supports us with their ad valorem taxes, but I think we do need to be careful about looking at budgets that continue to grow, even though they're growing at very small percentages, when we're projecting even larger credit hour declines than we had thought we were back when we adopted the budget guidelines last fall. I don't think there's anything necessarily to do about this, and I don't, these budgets are carefully crafted and put together, but I think we ought to be aware of those things going forward, so that we don't miss the fact that there are trends that we need to pay attention to. I did look at the tuition increases and asked both Dr. Larson and Rachel for some additional information. And I don't think anybody up here, we talk about it annually, is excited about raising tuition on our students. I think we still give a good value. And if you look at it compared to the Regents universities, we give a great value, less than a third of K-State and about 25% of what KU's numbers are. But when we look at that, if we're concerned about it, the total amount of tuition raised by our increases, $2 for a county resident, $4 for a state resident, $6 for an out-of-state resident, is about $1 million. So the question I always have at budget time is if I'm concerned about that, where am I going to find that $1 million? If I don't want to do that, I got to come up with something else. And so those are the kind of choices, I think, that we have to make between now and August to decide, really between now and May to adopt the management budget. But those numbers aren't insignificant for individual students, and they're not insignificant for our budget purposes. Dr. Cook?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I agree with your assessment of the impact of declining enrollment. I will say, though, that I think the administration and staff have worked hard at recruiting strategies in the past. I think the inclusion of the metro rate is one we anticipate to be helpful this fall. That should go into play. And while we're down in credit hours, the lowest we've been in 10 years or more, I think we're trying to develop strategies to deal with that. But I do appreciate and agree with your assessment that we need to continue to look at enrollment. That is a variable that's very important to the full-time cost as well as revenue costs in relationship to the expenses we have. So, but I do want to commend the faculty and staff for taking some actions to try and counter the national trend as well as the local trend.
Any other comments? If not, thank you, Dr. Larson.
If I can, Trustee Musso.
You may.
Thank you for the comment, for everything that's been said. I do want to point out, though, that if you go back to 2011, and if you start looking at our spend over those years up to now, colleges done a really good job of holding our expenses very reasonable, if not almost flat. And that includes giving, managing the increases in the benefit cost as well as increases in salary. I think the challenge has been the last couple of years, which kind of contributes to that increase, has been the need to do some things in the capital, in the capital side of the budget, where we really haven't addressed some issues over the years. So that has kind of driven those bottom-line numbers. But I can't say enough for the work of everybody here on keeping the costs down, especially when it comes to positions and salaries.
Dr. Larson, Rachel, thank you, and all the team and the 142, 124 budget administrators scattered throughout campus, and really everybody on campus that contributes to this. I mean, wherever we can find savings or get ideas for revenue or expense, revenue increases or expense savings, I hope people will pass those on, because it all adds up to help us do what we want to do, which is, Dr. Cook, inspire learning, transform lives, and strengthen communities.
Very good.
All right. Thank you. Next, equally exciting, college lobbyist report. Mr. Carter, do you have something, anything helpful to share with us?
Well, I will say, in my haste down to Topeka, I left my entire folder with my report and support notes.
Do you want a copy of what you did?
No, I, through modern technology, I was able to print one off in another area of campus and cobble together some of my notes. But I did have some interesting analysis that I wanted to share with you, and I did my best to kind of put that back together. Nothing has happened legislatively since we last met. The legislature was concluding their business, in fact, on the day that you met last month, and has been on break during the month of April. Only met today to receive the reports from legislative budget officials and the governor's budget amendment on the revenue estimates that were revised once again downward for this year. And so I'll go into a little bit of that. And really, quite frankly, even though we talk about this and have been talking about this for the past several years, there should be no surprises. None of this should rock us or surprise us. And to that point, I've included in the third page of my report, a budget run that was part of the 2012 legislation that was signed into law. And it shows you each month, what, each year, rather, each fiscal year, the expected loss in revenue that calculates up to about $4 billion by the time fiscal year 2018 rolls around. And we're pretty much on schedule for that. Those revenue projections, when the bill went into place, did not take into account any additional revenues that might be infused into the budget. Of course, we were expecting a shot of adrenaline from the income taxes that would be paid by the new jobs created. Obviously, that has not occurred in the way that those who put together this plan had anticipated. We did have, though, last year, the largest tax increase in the state's history passed, which was to the tune of 400-plus million for, as it averaged out over the course of a three-year period, and would be inching upward. I don't believe that many of the projections that were anticipated there have been realized either, though we're in the first year of that particular program. But sales tax receipts continue to be flat or down. And keep in mind that we increased the sales tax rate last year with that big mega-tax package that was passed. So what has happened? As of yesterday, economists, budgeters, as I like to call them, have further revised downward in the current year, $93.9 million. And in fiscal year 2017, $134.7 million for a total of $228.6 million, which are over and above the revised numbers that came out of November. So we continue to move downward in the revenue department. And you'll hear rhetoric and you'll see quotes in the paper that, well, we're taking in more money than we took in at this time last year. That very well may be true, and I think the numbers can show that. But what we don't talk about is the cost of doing business and the fact that we continue to have caseloads. We don't talk about the fact that we have obligations to pay down bonded indebtedness that either is through the Department of Transportation for a T-Works program, or we've now bonded out $1.5 billion in Capers investments. That will come with a price tag at some point in the near future. And we don't talk about that side of the coin. The other thing we don't talk about is the fact that there will be a cost, should the legislature choose to do this, and it is one of the options presented in the governor's budget amendments, and that is to securitize the tobacco settlement money. That is a one-time take on money that we would continue to get for quite some time. And there's a formula to it, but it is probably not in the best interest of the state's finances to do something like that. So it's refreshing to come and listen to a budget workshop like the one that just occurred here, where you talk about the realities of what the revenue looks like, what your expenditures look like, and how you plan for the future. If we were doing that in Topeka, I think it would be a much different picture and a much different report that I'm presenting today. The governor presented three options in his budget amendment. They all involve the sweeping of KDOT money, both in the current year and in the next fiscal year, to the tune of about $70 million this year and $115 million next year. They all, all three options include a 3% continued reduction in state university budgets. To this point, I believe that community colleges and technical colleges remain held harmless in this particular budget scenario, although we still wait to see what legislators will do when they come back on the 27th. There was no action taken specifically today with respect to higher education. The budget committees did adopt some of the governor's budget amendments that will move forward and be discussed when legislators return next week. But nothing was done specifically with respect to higher education. One of the options would be to, as I have already mentioned, securitize the tobacco settlement monies. It's about $42 million for the state general fund. Another option would be to take some of the efficiency savings that they were planning to use somewhere. I'm not exactly sure what the plan for those dollars were. But in option two, we see about $25 million that could be used from the efficiency savings from the study that we spent $3 million to find out where we could find efficiencies. The other component that I think is very concerning in that particular option, and again, we're talking about option two, everything flows through that I talked about, the cuts to universities and the cuts to KDOT. This one would delay the Capers repayment. Keep in mind that the legislature gave the governor the authority to delay the fourth quarter payment in this fiscal year to Capers to the tune of about $100 million, to use that money to backfill the hole in the state general fund. They would delay the payment or the repayment of those dollars to fiscal year 2018. So you're just adding another 8% on top of what we're already paying. That's what the legislation requires, is that there's an 8% interest on the money borrowed. Likely, we'll never see it happen. You guys have heard this record. You know how this goes. Then finally, option three contains, again, all of the cuts that I talked about, not the tobacco settlement, not the Capers repayment, but targeted agency cuts throughout state government. A little bit more difficult to work through. All three of the options, at some point, require some form of legislative approval to move through the process. And so it's going to be a very difficult veto session once legislators return on April 27th. I don't think it hurts to mention that when you hear reports of the revenue estimators and their inability to hit the mark, there's a lot of moving parts to the legislation that was passed, not only in 2012, but to the pieces that they measure. And some of the things that certainly were unanticipated were the reduction, significant reduction in agricultural income. And no one could have, at the time, predicted the loss in the oil and gas revenues that the state was anticipating. So again, those are all part of the pieces that go into that moving puzzle, if you will, that the revenue estimators look at when they reevaluate where we are in the state budget. I would add that for the first time in this process, this is the first time that the numbers have been adjusted down on individual income taxes and sales taxes. Those numbers have remained fairly strong in the estimating process. And for the first time, I think there's a realistic look at the fact that those numbers are, in fact, coming down. And so that should hopefully help us, if that trend continues, to see realistic budget projections as things move forward. What will the courts say about the equitable fix that the school sent them at the end of March? They've scheduled hearings, or they've scheduled to hear that matter, I believe it's May 8th. 10th, I'm seeing a lip sync come across from one of the board members. Thank you. I knew it was early in May. I would imagine that the legislators want to be out of town when that occurs. It's anybody's guess as to what will happen. There are some, there's a theory that, if you haven't been paying attention, you're going to start getting lots of postcards telling you to not vote for retention for certain judges. So there's this big campaign that will probably overshadow some of the legislative campaigns, quite frankly, to unseat or not retain four Supreme Court justices. And so we have this drama that's playing out in the court. And the real question is, will the court go all in and say, no, you didn't meet the muster that we were suggesting? Or will they simply say, the changes that you've made in the law will address equitable finance for K-12 schools? I think that's really what we're waiting to see that will happen in that early part of May. If the court says no, we're here for a special session in July, August, September. I'm not sure when it will be. I can tell you that no one that is a current sitting legislator wants to have any part of that, because they want to be out campaigning to retain their own seats. And so there's just so much drama that will play out over the next month or so, as legislators seek to wrap up the legislative session for 2016. I don't think anybody thought that it would probably be as drastic as it was, given the fact that we had already downgraded some of the expectations for the revenue picture. So that's kind of where things are at. There's been no legislation worked. We still have several things that are out there that will be subjects of conference committee reports that I talked about at the last meeting. And I'll certainly update you on those when the process begins to move again. But that's kind of the picture of what's going on at the state.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dick. Trustee Cross?
Mr. Carter, thank you for your report. It occurs to me that, I read a news story, I think, in the Kansas City Star two, three days ago, that the governor may be considering repealing the LLC exemption from the 2012 tax cuts. Is there any truth to that?
I would suggest that we've seen no movement from the administration with an interest or a desire to back away from the law that was passed in 2012. I do think there have been some reports of some legislators, and I think you'll begin to see many legislators distancing themselves from the administration over the next few months as the election season starts to heat up. But I'm not aware of any present plan that would back away, repeal, shave off any of the numbers from the LLC or S corp.
As a follow-up, Mr. Carter, thank you for that. Does the governor think that the tax cuts, you just made a couple of comments about oil and gas and agriculture sector being down, certainly they have been here recently. Does he think that they'll rebound and then thereby justify his cuts? Is that, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I don't know that I can adequately answer that question. And everything in the economy is cyclical, as we've seen, whether it's with the stock market or whether it's with different sectors of the economy. And I think the main takeaway here is, Kansas' budget has always been built on the proverbial three-legged stool. And when you start sawing off legs or changing the expectations on where that income comes, if you start putting all your eggs in one basket, there's a lot of cliches and old sayings in that answer that I just gave. But when everything comes from one source or one significant... But when everything comes from one source or one or two significant sources, you have to do well. The economy has to do well, or everything will underperform.
I think the governor's spokesperson indicated that there were three options on the table, and that she did not, this was before they came out, that she did not expect any of them to include raising taxes on businesses or anyone for that matter, if I remember the quote from the Star. Dr. Sobchak?
Dick, and the governor's memo that he sent out, where he itemized, or he laid out the three options. Option three, I thought specifically addressed cuts, potential cuts to KU and to the universities, but I didn't see anything specifically highlighting community colleges.
That's still unknown. You're correct, Dr. Sobchak. There's a $5 million hit with the label of Board of Regents. The Board of Regents doesn't have a whole lot of money that comes to their office anyhow. However, our budget, as well as the technical colleges, does pass through their operation. And so I have to think that if option three is the one that's executed, that there would be some form of a cut to the other higher education sectors. But it's not been detailed out in any of the conversations that we've had, and they just started having those today. So.
Has the consensus revenue estimating group drastically changed its methodology or its membership or how it goes about its business?
No, it's not. There was some news stories preceding the revenue estimating group's date of when they were getting together, and I think the governor would like to see some changes in how that group works. But it's pretty historical, and no changes have been made. I mean, they've been doing this for decades, as far as how they estimate what the expected revenues and.
Remember, that's an economist from Wichita State, University of Kansas, Kansas State, and others who do that estimating, and they've been doing it the same way, and if we don't like it, we blame them. You don't have to answer that.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Chair, I want to thank you. The governor's spokeswoman did, in fact, said, "I had a plan," quote, "to raise taxes on small business or anyone else will not be among them." Thank you.
Dick, whenever you hear this stuff, they're always taking money out of the highway fund. How much money is in the highway fund? How much can they take out?
Well, hundreds of millions. However, we're nearing the bottom of that barrel. And I think the real concern is, is that for the first time now, with any sincerity, projects are now going to be delayed. And we'd love to hear how good the roads in Kansas are, and lots of people like to tout that, but that also requires maintenance, just like we do here on campus. And when you get behind, you know what that means, and you have those capital conversations here. That's exactly what's going on at the state level.
Does this mean they're never going to finish this K-10 thing out here?
Pardon me, K-10 and the Gateway. I've got some over here. I just didn't bring it up with you. Maybe people will stop asking questions. It's all part of my show. K-10 and the Johnson County Gateway, Overland Park Gateway are not part of the announced cuts. Those projects will be seen through to the convention.
Again, other question? I'm just kidding.
I'll give you a break, because I just started making a list as you went through here. We just had a budget discussion about how to reach a balanced budget and juggle priorities so that we have this college on good financial footing. And I just made a list of things that I would urge this board to never do. We should not borrow money to invest it in the stock market to beat the cost of borrowing. We should not take money from one promised area, highway funds, and use it for something completely different. We should never budget so poorly that we have to cut somebody in the 10th month of a fiscal year, which is what universities would have to do now, after being cut in the 8th month of their fiscal year. We should not use one-time money on operating costs, especially when that money was promised for children's funds, initiative funds. We should not ignore maintenance and defer costs to the next generation or the next board. We should not ignore it when a policy choice we make fails and we refuse to change it. We should not boldly pick winners and losers after promising not to do that, but that's exactly what was done by allowing anybody with LLC income or subchapter S income not to pay taxes. And we should not blame and attack judges or others when we don't do our job. Those are my simple comments about what we've seen from our state legislature and our governor. So, any other comments? Or may we let, okay.
In those latter remarks, Mr. Chair, you've represented businesses, may I ask, Mr. Chair? And I don't agree with the premise that government should be run like a business, but let's assume it should. If you've made a failed decision, should you stand by it calendar year after calendar year after it has proven not to work?
I think businesses in this college would have a Plan B and would go to it if we found it necessary to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But, to be fair, this particular decision needs 63 and 21. So it's not just one person at the top changing his or her mind, not a particular party at 63 and 21, and 97, 120-some of those are elected in a second.
63 being the number of members of the House to get a majority, and 21 being the number of members in the Senate.
We're correct.
Okay. Good point. You may be seated. Thank you, Dick. We do appreciate what you do up there. It's a moving target all the time. We have managed to dodge the bullet, and I almost sit up here feeling like it's unfair that we have done so, because there are many parts of the state budget that have taken significant cuts, huge cuts, and we have avoided them, and it's almost like we haven't shared the sacrifice of the mess that we're in. Selfishly, I appreciate that. All right, we'll move on to committee reports and recommendations. Collegial steering, we met on Tuesday, April 12th. We talked about two subjects. One is faculty participation, really all campus participation in our 50th anniversary celebration, and if we end up with some type of fundraising campaign, making sure that we include everybody on campus as part of that effort. And we revisited some more issues on curriculum and academic quality and curriculum development, and what it takes to have high-quality teaching, high-quality faculty, and high-quality students coming to this college. I'd be happy to answer questions about that. Or we can move on to human resources.
Absolutely. The Human Resources Committee met on Monday, April 4th. Salary adjustments and salary increases were on the agenda. Dr. Corr presented an overview of the salary adjustments and increases proposed for fiscal year 2017. The recommendation includes salary adjustments for eligible, non-provocationary, full-time, non-bargaining unit employees identified in recent compensation studies. Also included is a 2% salary increase for full-time and part-time, non-bargaining unit employees, and finally, a 2.75% increase in the adjunct faculty salary table. Mr. Chairman, it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees authorize salary adjustments effective July 1, 2016, for eligible, non-provocationary, full-time, non-bargaining unit employees identified in the most recent compensation studies. Additionally, effective July 1, 2016, a 2% salary increase for all non-provocationary, non-bargaining unit salaried and full-time and part-time hourly employees employed as of June 30, 2016, and a 2.75% increase in the adjunct faculty salary table is recommended.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, what she said. That's two months in a row. You had all the benefit packages last month with insurance and everything, and today you have this motion.
It's all right.
It's difficult. Any discussion about the proposed salary packages? If not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Propose no. Motion carries unanimously. Does that complete your report?
It does. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Learning quality.
Mr. Chair, the Learning Quality Committee meeting was canceled for April 4, 2016. Items were sent to the committee electronically for consideration. Details can be found subsequently in the consent agenda of the April 21st Board Packet. The agreements noted below will be brought forward for approval through consent agenda at today's meeting. There were affiliation, cooperation, articulation, and reverse transfer agreements for the 2015, 2016 new affiliation with respect to new affiliation agreements. There's also 2016 and 17 affiliation agreement renewals. There's numerous of these that you can find in the consent agenda. And then there's also 2016 and 18 cooperative agreement renewal termination agreements. And then the next regular Learning Quality Committee meeting will be held on Monday, May 2, 2016. And have we picked a room yet? Oh, okay, here. Yeah, in this room. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Questions for Trustee Cross? Not, we're ready for Management Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Management Committee met on Wednesday, April 6. Trustees Cross and Lindstrom were in attendance, in addition to a large contingent of faculty and staff. That report can be found on pages 4 through 30 of your materials. We have five action items tonight. The first one deals with the parking policy. Proposed updates included renaming the policy to Parking and Personal Transportation Policy. As you look through that policy, you'll see the changes in red. The changes basically deal with the naming change to personal transportation, and specifically under personal transportation, that deals with the accommodation for electric cars. It includes language regarding segways and hoverboards and other electrical means of individual transportation, and where those can be operated and where they can be parked. Unless there are questions regarding those detailed policy changes you've had them to review, I would say it is the recommendation of Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the Parking and Personal Transportation Policy, as is shown subsequently in the Board Packet, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to amend the Parking and Personal Transportation Policy. Is there any discussion?
I just have a quick question for reference. Do we benchmark that stuff up of someone else? Is there somebody who's a real leader in policies regarding segways?
Johnson County Community College.
I was curious if this is a thing that everyone's having to do now. It's interesting, is why I ask.
Well, it's a very good question. I would guess that there are colleges probably in warmer climates that more year-round use segways and hoverboards, but I would defer to Rex, or Mitch, or Randy, or whomever knows about that kind of thing. We're anticipating in some cases, but with the advent of electric cars, we do have a need to identify so. Dr. Room?
We felt the need to address that because we were staying in the hoverboard today. They just on our campus, particularly in buildings, and at the same time, across the news media, you're seeing kids about exploding, they're being told not to use them in airports and social real safety security. We're trying to just make that sort of better for the public.
And yes, our office always partners with the department. We're coming forward with the request of revisions to do their surveys and make sure that we're either in sync or where we need to be from a statutory perspective or just best practices. So we did some checks on this as well.
It allowed the law enforcement office to have something to stand on and then put it with writing around. So did you see that?
This was also a topic of conversation at the League Recs meeting, so all of our League colleagues are also talking about their policies with regard to this. So it's a topic.
That would be the League of?
The League of Innovation.
Which includes a number of community colleges around the country.
Yes.
Actually, 19, I believe, and you'll remember that last month, our president reported that Johnson County Community College was among the most frequented benchmark colleges within the league. So we weren't too far off of our progressive innovation.
Trustee Cross, go ahead.
In our investigation, we discovered that hoverboards don't actually hover. I was disappointed.
Have we voted on this?
We have not. This is fascinating discussion. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Propose no.
The second item is that Rachel stated that, per the college's Framework for Investment Policy 214, the Board of Trustees authorizes the investment of temporary idle cash to be administered by the president. College administration desires to establish an account at First State Bank and Trust Company for placement and redemption of such investments. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize the president, the Associate Vice President for Financial Services, Chief Financial Officer, and the Director of Accounting Services and Grants to administer the placement and redemption of investments, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the signatures. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes. Propose no. Motion carried.
The next item is in relation to the bid for Contract for Renovations to Office and Classroom Buildings, OCB. That detail is found on page 12 of your packet. You can see that 72 firms were notified directly, 28 responded. You'll notice the citation of the public announcement. The bid is not the lowest bid that was provided, but the low bidder did not meet the specifications of the required bid, the minimum specifications, and that is the reason that we are recommending the other bidder or the bidder that received it. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the lowest acceptable bids of $15,986 from Acme Floor Company, Inc., $36,185 from Campion Interior Solutions, $63,910 from DH Pace Company, Inc., $159,120 from Jinko LLC, $112,430 from Metro Air Conditioning, and $39,797 from Switzer Brothers Painting totaling $427,428, plus an additional $21,371.40 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for total expenditures not to exceed $448,799.40 for the OCB renovation. And I'll make that motion.
Been moved and seconded for the bid packages. Are there any questions? Yes?
I would make one additional comment, that the detail of this discussion has been done in a variety of management meetings as well as board meetings, and so there's a number of detailed pricing there for each of you to consider. We moved through that expenditure rather quickly, but it has not been without a lot of discussion.
Each of the separate bids was a separate bid package, and the winning bidder was one of the companies that bid on those packages. That's why we have six separate approvals here. All right. No other questions? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Propose no. Motion carries.
Next item is the Contract for Renovations to the Office and Classroom Building. Again, 72, well, 72 companies were notified. We had 23 bids. That detail is found on page 16 of your Board Packet. And again, I would say, which I failed to say in the first bid, a review committee goes through all of these bid specifications and bid proposals to make sure that they do meet our expectation. Did we do that? I guess I just did that one, didn't I? Sorry.
There are two of them. No, there's, you're on the one on page.
Okay. Yeah. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the lowest acceptable bid of $33,833 from Beacon Contracting, $130,850 from Driftwood Contracting LLC, $48,500 from Iburger Construction, Inc., $12,180 from Switzer Brothers Painting, and $85,700 from the Glass Act totaling $311,113, plus an additional $15,555.65 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for total expenditures not to exceed $326,668.65 for the OCB renovation, and I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the bid packages. Are there any questions? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Propose no. Motion carried.
Next item is the Performing Arts Center space. The scope includes upgrades to finish its enhancements for Yardley Hall, Polski Theater, green room, dressing rooms, and lobby area upgrades. Again, a project that we've had considerable discussion on. We notified 51 firms, 16 responded. You have that detail on page 20. The recommendation, we did take the low bid in this case. I'll make the recommendation, then I have a comment. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $1,703,900 from Lloyd Builders, Inc., plus an additional $70,000 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $1,773,900 for the Performing Arts Center renovation. Arts Center renovation. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
My comment is that you'll see that we estimated that project to be about $1,004,000. It came in, as you can see, higher than that estimate. There are a couple of reasons for that. One is that this is a pretty complicated renovation of, basically with our seating and what we're doing with Yardley Hall. The second area is that we have a very restricted timeline. We want to start this project as soon as we can, and we may have started a few things now, but basically when students leave, but make sure we have that project completed when the fall semester begins. And so, there's a real compressed time area to get all of this work done, and that comes with somewhat of a cost. But I'd be happy to have the staff answer any questions that the Board may have about that.
I would like to point out, Trustee Cook, that a significant part of that difference we've made up by funds in the Foundation Office that were collected thanks to a tax credit program that the state had in place years ago. I believe that total amounts about $188,000.
Correct.
And that'll be shifted over to help with this project.
Further questions or comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. I knew I'd get back to that. Passes with five yeses.
We had a couple of reports. Andy updated us on articulation agreements and some of that progress. We had the regular report on purchases that were less than what we've bid upon. You have the report of the, Rex gave a report on the Progress of Work in Progress Report. We did have quite an extensive report on our Technology Infrastructure Management and Maintenance Program. And the Management Committee was blessed with a really cool, detailed map of the infrastructure that is matriculating around the campus, and in cases of completed work, in cases of work that's being worked on now, and work that's going to be completed in the near future. But that might be something that you'd all be interested to see, because it's kind of a complex network of a whole life of itself, of wires and cells, molecules moving around underground so that we can communicate with one another. You have a little brief report, well, it's not a very brief report, but you've got that detail in your packet. And I just wanted to compliment the staff for going through all of that work. Joe, you might want to make a comment on that as well. But that was very impressive, and it was an outstanding report. You want to make a comment on that?
I concur.
After I screwed all that up. Thank you very much for your great work on that. That was terrific.
Any questions of the Management Committee members?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
I'd just like to revise my earlier no vote and extend that I was in unanimity.
Okay.
I didn't want anybody in the community upset with me that I voted no. Depending on my time.
All right. So, the Performing Arts Center was a unanimous yes vote. So noted.
Thank you.
All right. Ready for the President's Recommendation for Action. The first item on that is the Treasurers' Report. Trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the Board Packet, pages 31 to 41, contains the Treasurers' Report for the month ending February 29th, 2016. Some of the items of note include, on page one of the Treasurers' Report is the post, general post-secondary technical education fund summary as of February 29th. Approximately 67% of the college's fiscal year had expired. An ad valorem property tax distribution of $2.7 million was received in March and will be reflected in next month's report. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of February 29th, 2016, in all funds was $102 million, which is approximately $13.3 million higher than the same time last year. Expenses in the primary operating fund are all within approved budgetary limits, and therefore, it is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ending February 29th, 2016, subject to audit, and I would make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Treasurers' Report. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Sobchak, next item is yours.
Thank you, Trustee Musall. I'd like to introduce this next item. It's the First Amendment to the 2015-2018 Master Agreement. I'll go as far as reading the recommendation, and then during the discussion period, we'll say a few words. There could be additional discussion, and turn it over to Dr. Corb, provide greater elaboration on the amendment itself. So, the Administration obviously recommends board ratification of the First Amendment to the 2015-2018 Master Agreement. And I'd like to read the formal recommendation. It is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the First Amendment to the 2015-2018 Master Agreement as shown subsequently in the Board Packet. It starts on page 42.
I'm going to ask you, withhold a motion until we hear it from Dr. Corb?
Can I go first?
Oh, yes, you may.
Thank you. I want to be able to introduce Dr. Corb.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank a number of folks who played a big part in bringing this to a successful closure. Specifically, the members of the faculty, Dennis R. Joe and Steve Wilson, who worked in the actual discussion, negotiations, I guess you could say, as well as Ron Palczek, they're the head of the FA. I'd also like to thank Dr. Corb, Becky Senthlever, for their role in the negotiations, and also Tanya Wilson for her role as counsel in making sure that all of this came together in the way it should have, the way it should have happened. So, Judy, I'm going to turn this over to you, and you can provide a little bit more detail.
Okay. Well, you have the amendment. You've been able to read it. And we worked with the faculty, and I believe we, I think we only had two meetings, actually, where we got together to talk about this. But the amendment mirrors the state statute with a few exceptions. There are some things that if the statute goes away, would not be relevant anymore. And so, Tanya did a great job of helping us kind of narrow this down so that we pulled the pieces out of that, that we would be able to use if the statute did not exist. And when we got together with the faculty, we kind of compared notes. We decided on a draft that we would be able to use. We agreed on a draft, and we only had, I believe, four points that we needed to go back and talk about and get some clarification on, which we were able to do that very easily. So, we managed to kind of work through that, and we went back and forth a couple of times with the language, but ended up basically with an agreement where there is a due process, a process described for due process that was outlined in the statute already for the most part. It's just the statute gave a couple of options, and now we really only have one if the statute goes away. This amendment will be effective if the statutes go away or are materially changed. So, we tried to look at different scenarios that could happen and say, this will kick in if some of those other things happen. So.
Questions for Dr. Corb? Trustee Cross?
Why was an arbitration clause added?
An arbitration clause? You mean using an?
Paragraph B, article, under Article 5, Paragraph B. Parties shall make a joint request for arbitration to the American Arbitration Association.
That was one of the options in the statute. The statute actually allowed for a hearing officer or the process of using an arbitration through American Arbitration Association or the Arbitration Association. If the statutes go away, that hearing officer option would likely not exist. So, we pulled the piece out of the statute that would still be there, and that's what we put in. Is there other description to that? I mean, that's really what we used, that section of the statute that would still be relevant.
The statute allowed the Department of Education to appoint its own hearing officer, or you could go to the AAA for arbitration. Okay. The hearing officer would go away if the statute goes away, so we maintained the other procedure that had already been in the statute.
Exactly. Yes.
Barely put.
Yep.
So, do we have that option here? We're just appointing an arbitrator. Is that right?
We don't have the hearing officer option that was in the statute, because that was through Department of Ed, and that would go away. If the statute doesn't exist, that's what created that process, was the statute. So, if the statute goes away, that process really would not exist. So, we chose what would be left in the statute that was the other option, and that's what we have in our due process clause.
I thank you for that answer. I'm asking, is there, the only choice here, if this springs into action, is that we go to an arbitrator? Am I misreading it?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So, Section C, where it talks about the procedural due process right forward to the parties, that section is almost verbatim, still from the statute. So, regardless of whether it was a hearing officer or an arbitrator, they're both going to be assigned to go do the same thing and provide the same procedural due process and the same outcomes with respect to finding and report.
But goes the arbitrator here?
Correct.
Only the arbitrator.
The individual hearing, it would be somebody from AAA in this process.
Okay.
Because there is no hearing officer procedure left if the statute is repealed. And the AAA procedure, from my familiarity, is that they would typically give a list of five to seven arbitrators to both sides who would strike, and each side would strike the ones that they feel have a conflict or they don't want, and see if they can reach an agreement on an arbitrator.
Correct. And that, again, is parallel, pretty closely with what was written in the statute as far as, you know, the list. So, that remains as well.
Any other questions? I'm going to, Joe, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask, it's unusual, I'm going to ask Ron, as President of the Faculty Association, if you want to come up and make any comments now regarding this. If it might enlighten the Board, if you could tell us your, the Faculty Association's perspective on the, I don't even know if I call them negotiations, it was pretty much a discussion and a consensus-reaching process. But you don't have to, but I assume you're going to address it in your comments, but you might want to address it before we vote. And you probably need to come to the podium so that our.
I have a teacher's voice.
Yeah, well, you don't have a teacher's camera.
Well, that's that one right here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We did vet it, and we did appreciate the team and the leadership of Joe Sobczek for working this out. But I do want to report, if I can, the result of our ratification with the Faculty Association. And what we had is 56, 76% of all bargaining members voted. That was 250 faculty. Out of 331 we have on campus, 81 faculty members didn't vote or abstain. A couple of them emailed me, said they were abstaining. That's 242 out of the 250 voting, which is 96.8% voting yes, they want to ratify this amendment. Eight voted no, which is 3.2%. So, we had a great discussion with the faculty. Our negotiations went well. We had consultation with the legal counsel, with KNEA. They felt very comfortable, this was very parallel to what we've had in the statute. And we encouraged the Board to vote yes as well tonight. Any questions for me about that?
Questions? Yes, David?
For the eight that voted against it, was there a common theme for those eight, do you know?
They probably were more concerned about the idea of binding arbitration.
Okay. Let me make it clear, is this binding arbitration? Does this eliminate the opportunity of anybody to appeal beyond that point?
No.
No. The same rights to go on to a district court, essentially similar rights as anybody had under the current statute.
Correct.
Okay. So, it's an arbitrator decision, but it is not binding final, and it allows additional appeal, so, okay.
Dr. Corb, when was the last time that this was utilized?
I'm not aware of it ever having been utilized, but.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Thank you, Ron. Dr. Sobchak, you have some comments before we vote? And others will have some opportunity to.
No, I would like to thank the Board for their understanding and patience in following through with this whole process. We turned this around very quickly, and we couldn't have done so without your endorsement of doing what we had to do. So, I'd like to thank you very much.
Anybody else with comments on this? I think it's important that we place this in context that, because for people watching this for the first time, the Legislature has proposed a bill which has exited committee with a recommendation to pass it, which would repeal the state statute mandating due process, what people know as tenure, for community college professors. And that caused a stir. And what this Board authorized two months ago was that the Administration begin discussions with our Faculty Association to ensure that if that legislation passed, we had a process in place that provided the protections that have traditionally been available, if never used, on campus. And that process has led to this really consensus agreement, which I think is cleaner, better, faster, more efficient, and equally as fair as the old system. So, if the Legislature, in its wisdom from April 27th on, decides to pass this at the last minute, which is what they did with K-12 teachers two years ago, we are ready to go. And in February, we had this room full, we had a number of speakers at our public open forum, we had faculty members upstairs in the Ben Craig Auditorium, because we had overflow and not enough room here. And it is my hope that by, I will urge us to pass this tonight. I don't have any reason to believe anybody could possibly have a reason to vote against it, but that it will restore whatever trust or credibility was threatened at that time by faculty members who felt like somehow they had been blindsided or the rug would be pulled out from under them. I think all of us said at the time, that was not the intent, that was not the Board's intent, that was not the Board's goal. And by passing this tonight, I think we will prove that. It is a lesson to me in a little bit of patience and a little bit of reliance on the fact that this Board and this college takes measured steps on almost everything we do, to the point sometimes of never acting. And we have now acted quickly to ensure that what I think we all wanted as a goal will be met. So, Dr. Cook?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I think with 92% approval by faculty, that's a pretty strong statement that they're in occurrence. So, it supports your comment that we probably, well, I'm just pleased we had 92%. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Palczek?
I don't want to beat a math person on there by 96.8%. 96.8, three, three point, yeah.
Okay. The math professor corrected, 96.8% of the faculty members who voted, voted to approve the amendment.
Thank you. I didn't do well with math.
All in favor of the amendment to the master agreement, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank everyone for helping us address a very important issue. I don't want to say put it behind us, because it's always there as an alternative and as a protection, and it will still be there if the Legislature acts. Dr. Sobczek, your monthly report to the Board at 10 after 6, two hours and 10 minutes into our meeting.
Is that?
No.
Do you want me to go through this pretty fast, or not do it at all?
We need to do it. It's important stuff. I shouldn't minimize.
You have the monthly report to the Board dated April 21st, 2016, almost 30 pages of incredible accomplishments and achievements by many people here on campus. I'd like to highlight a few of those that demonstrate what we're doing here as far as outreach, especially to our local community, in the local high schools. For example, the Billington Library, specifically staff members Jessica Tipton and Judith Vaughn hosted 50 seniors from Olatha North High School. Jenny Kroom from Career Pathways presented to 950 students throughout the Shawnee Mission School District, talking about our Career Pathways Initiative. Dave Ellis in Counseling gave a presentation to 70 homeschoolers here on campus. Dr. Melanie Harvey presented about the carbon and nitrogen cycle to 5th graders at Pinkney Elementary School. That's terrific. And lastly, and these are just a few, if you go to pages 27 and 28, you'll see an incredible number of high school visits, presentations, and events by our recruitment staff that are going on here every day, and these are just over the past several weeks. Now, I'm going to take you through a chronology of some really fun things that I had the pleasure to attend, and demonstrate to you how the role this college has in the community. For example, on March 26th, our Cosmetology Program helped young women prepare for the Down Syndrome's Guild Prom. It was during Saturday, it was almost. It was during Saturday, it was almost, it seemed like an all-day preparation period. Our cosmetology students became members of the prom squad, and they did hair, nails, and makeup of the prom attendees for that evening. It was great community involvement, and definitely like to compliment the program coordinator, Lana Hodas, for getting that done. It was just a really great thing to see. On April first, we had the International Dinner. It was themed Taste of the World. Two-hundred-and-seventy-five attendees feasted on the outstanding meal prepared by our famous catering staff and enjoyed just a wonderful vibe that filled the Rainier Center. Congratulations to Patricia Donaldson, who's the coordinator of this program, and her team, who have made this event happen for ten years. More importantly, we'd like to thank the international students, who joined together to serve the food, provide the entertainment, and just served as incredibly gracious hosts for the evening. The proceeds of this will go to our International Students Scholarship Fund, a great event. On April fifth, we celebrated teaching excellence at the Lieberman Adjunct Faculty Awards Dinner. This award, named in honor of George and Florine Lieberman, recognizes the excellence in the classroom by our adjunct faculty. I'd like to read the names of the seven recipients of the awards. Rebecca Castendick, the adjunct associate professor in English. Leanna Graham, adjunct assistant professor in reading. Madhur Matur, adjunct assistant professor in mathematics. Tobey McDonald, an adjunct assistant professor in foreign languages. Rachel Olson, the adjunct assistant professor in biology. And Catherine Trag, adjunct assistant professor in speech. And Lori Voss Shunover, adjunct assistant professor in mathematics. It was a great evening to see those recipients collect those awards. On April seventh, you pull up, on that day, you have the opportunity to pull up JCC and the news, and you may have noticed that Luann Wolfgram, the professor in chair in biotechnology, spoke about a unique partnership at the Twelfth Annual Worthington Bio Conference in Worthington, Minnesota. This partnership started when Siva Biomean, which is a local company that produces animal vaccines, recognized that many of its new employees were students, former students of Luann's. And so Siva, along with Luann and a local staffing company, teamed up to help address the skilled labor shortage in the biotech field. This is of great service to our community, especially in the animal health corridor. Model UN. Our team earned the Distinguished Delegation Award at the 2016 National Model UN Conference in New York City. We represented Kenya. Three of our students were selected for conference staff positions. These are, and this is a big deal, oftentimes these students will find themselves in front of a group of five-hundred delegates to this conference managing, managing a UN format-type meeting. It's incredibly exciting. The students who won those positions were Daniel Criss from Overland Park, Donald Roth Prairie Village, and Megan Dyts from Lawrence. Other members of the team were Nikki Joy Carstens, Overland Park, Frida Laura from Overland Park, Enrique De Luna, Overland Park, Mark Rushkin from Poltava, Ukraine. He was our, if we'd gotten Ukraine, we would have been set for that. Theodore Bennett from Stillwell, Brittany Gindel, Overland Park, Brianna Jarvis from Overland Park, Sarah Lamb, Olatha, Connor Mahan, Overland Park, Donald Roth, Overland Park, Megan Fuller, Overland Park, and Bridget Brown, Lawrence, Lacey Rowe, Lawrence, Sarah White, Overland Park, and Michaela Johnson from Baldwin City. The faculty advisor is Dr. Brian Wright, professor of political science, and the co-advisor is Aaron Swift, the administrative assistant for the Center for Student Involvement. The Model UN Conference is really a fantastic opportunity for our students, not only to learn more about the world, but also to develop those soft skills that are so important for their futures. Remarkably, when this team comes, this team comes back, they run a competition, the Metro KC, the Kansas City Model United Nations, with around three-hundred students in attendance here on our campus. I want to read to you the schools that were represented. Bentonville, Arkansas, Blue Valley High Schools, Blue Valley Northwest and Blue Valley West, Battle High School from Columbia, Missouri, Climax Springs High School in Missouri, Fayetteville High School in Arkansas, Fort Leavenworth High, Patton High School, Fort Leavenworth, Harrisonville Junior High, Harrisonville, Missouri, Hickman Mills High School in Columbia, Missouri, Hickman Mills High School in Kansas City, in Kansas City, Missouri, Liberty North High School, Lewisburg High School, Notre Dame de Sion, Olatha North High School, Pembroke Hill, Rockhurst High School, Shawnee Mission West, Sumner Academy in KCK, Sunrise Bel Air in Kansas, St. Thomas Aquinas. It's a fantastic event. I have to say that every one of those delegates was dressed in their Sunday's best. It was just wonderful to see that. Congrats to Dr. Wright and his team for conducting this competition on our campus. It's a real kudo for JCCC to be able to host this. It keeps getting bigger and better every year. And lastly, I'd just like to announce that this year's graduation commencement speaker will be Dr. Steve Gerson, who has been on faculty here for thirty-eight years, and he has promised to keep his remarks to under an hour, so we're looking forward to his address.
Fifty-minute class period, right?
Exactly. It'll be terrific. That concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, I see that high school thing on campus is kind of like the NFL Combine. I think you're just out there getting your recruits, probably works, probably helps to bring them here. Any questions for Dr. Sobchak on the monthly report? If not, old business, I'm not aware of any old business, new business, nominating committee, I have asked and they have accepted my nomination that Dr. Cook and Trustee Lindstrom serve as the nominating committee for the officer positions and the liaison positions for the next school year, and they will report back hopefully in May, and certainly will vote on those in June. Report from Board Liaisons, Faculty Association, Ron?
You shortened my report a little bit. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to the board. Thank you, Board President, Chair, and Dr. Sobchak. I'm pleased to announce, of course, that the election happened. We had quite a few people vote. I'm really happy that we have that ninety-six point eight percent of those who did vote for Provo. The Faculty Association has started the election process for our new officers for serving the college from May 2016 to May 2017. At the next board meeting in May, I will have the pleasure of introducing to you the new president of the Faculty Association for the college. And I'd like to thank again, if I may, the outgoing officers, some of them will stay here, some will not, but Vice President Brian Wright, who is in the room, Secretary Dennis Arjo, Treasurer Brett Cooper, Unit Serve Rep Jeff Anderson, and Past President Deb Williams. They've been very helpful to me and been a reward for the college to have on that scene. Additionally, I'd also like to thank the board for welcoming me, always showing me welcoming faces, and I just want to look forward to spending more time, now that I'll be exiting the office as president, with my students here at the college. I still will be active in the Faculty Association because I will be the past president and will still serve in the board. I'd like to thank you again for permitting me to make this report to you, and if you have any questions for me, I'm open for them.
Questions for Ron? Yes, Dave?
Mr. Coman, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your job.
No, thank you.
I think an appropriate math, mathurism would be that because of people like you, the sum of all these parts is greater than it otherwise would be.
Oh, that is very nice.
Yeah. You, you know, this, I don't think it's ever an easy year to be Faculty Association president. I think this year may have brought some unique challenges, and just like, I mean, just like now, no matter what was going on, you always, you know, faced them with a smile and with the resolve to find the best solution for this college. And I don't think any of us can appreciate someone more than having that attitude.
Well, I, like I've said to Dr. Sobchak, and I've also told you, and I probably should share it with the rest of the board members, is it's a team, the board, the administration, and the leadership from the faculty. And then we have three different leaderships within the Faculty, the Faculty Association, we have Ed Affairs, we have the Faculty Senate, and we've also worked well together. I think we're heading in the right direction. Hopefully, the ship is being steered, we're gonna have good leadership, and we just keep going, and we'll get better and better as an institution. And I really do thank you. You are one of the finest boards in the country.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? I'm not quite done yet, but thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you.
It's been a great team, teamwork effort. Top that, Johnson County Education Research Triangle.
Can't do it, Mr. Chairman. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle Authority, or JSER, met on Monday, April eleventh. The meeting was held at seven-thirty a.m. at the K-State Olatha Campus. There was a quorum president, and Chairman Ireland presided over the meeting. We heard from Sue Parker from the Parker Communications Group. That group is the new PR firm hired to increase awareness of JSER's contribution to the local economy. We also approved university budgets. We approved an invoice from JSER attorney James Hubbard in the amount of thirteen-hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents. And then we received reports from the universities. KU Edwards campus, David Cook provided a program facility and scholarship update. He mentioned KU Edwards also has a metro rate, and I thought that was interesting, and that JSER provides approximately twenty percent of KU Edwards campus's support. K-State's Ralph Richardson mentioned the progress being made in their program development, their collaboration with academic and industry partners, their outreach and engagement efforts, and all of that is workforce development-driven, is what he mentioned. He also noted that K-State Olatha will begin offering, and this is, I thought was interesting as well, opportunities toward hospitality management degree, and hopefully the college is aware of that.
Right. They're working very closely with ONA.
Very good. And then finally, KU Jeff Reini, who usually gives that report, wasn't there, so Dr. Stephen Williamson talked about the Clinical Trials Office and the significant growth that they have experienced in their research. He noted that this work prioritizes and ensures scientific merit, cost-effective, fiscally sound processes, and most importantly, safety. He also mentioned the Midwest Cancer Alliance, which is an outreach arm of KU Cancer Center. It is a membership-based organization that brings together cancer research, care, and support professionals to advance the quality and reach of cancer prevention, early detection, treatment, and survivorship. It, in essence, it links member hospitals, medical professionals, and their patients with the KU Cancer Research Center and clinical trials. The Midwest Cancer Alliance also is housed in the facility right there at the research center. Receipts for the past month, in March, were up point eight-five percent, sales tax receipts for JSER purposes. In March, and the next meeting of the JSER will be on September twentieth at seven-thirty a.m. at KU Edwards campus, the best building, room three-fifteen. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Questions on JSER? Thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. That's all the report, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Cook, I apologize, Kansas Association of Community College Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. KACCt has not met since our last meeting, however, I would report that two trustees that have served on the KACCt board, that many of you perhaps know, I think both of them have passed since our last meeting, Mary Ann Flounder of Kansas City, Kansas, who had been in poor health, has recently passed, and more recently last week, Ron Schwartz of Dodge City Community College, who had also been in poor health, has passed, so we'll miss them on the KACCt board. I did have the opportunity to attend a conference call yesterday for ACCt, and we're in the process of putting together a survey, followed by some strategic tools to help recruit and train new board members to ACCt, so we'll have that survey coming out, and we're preparing that all for a summer board retreat this July in San Antonio. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Questions for Dr. Cook? If not, we're ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a listing of items that are non-controversial and routine. They have been reviewed by committees or staff. They're typically considered in one motion and approved in a single vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed and considered, debated, and voted upon separately. Are there any items anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Trustee Cross?
Mr. Chair, I have a question about, I believe it's under temporary employees with respect to the Pakistan teleconference.
With which item is that?
Pakistan grant teleconference. It's at page seventy-two, item number six.
Page seventy-two of the board packet?
Yes, sir.
The Pakistan Grant Teleconference International Education, Andy, is that something you can address?
Yes, I can. We began a relationship with IBA Sucker, it's an internet, or a business school in Pakistan that's developing a community college system, mirroring something in the way we approach community college education in America. We began, I think it's been a year and a half ago, with a series of live conferences. They gather in the evening, we gather at eight in the morning, and they have a live video conference. I might say they serve tea in China. We usually have coffee in paper cups, but anyway, we noticed differences. But they, they sent a group of faculty to visit us a year ago. The relationships were very promising, exciting conversations. We reapplied, the State Department has renewed the grant. We're the only community college in the United States that's doing this. They will be sending, I think it's six faculty, to spend a semester here in the fall. They'll be actually accompanying faculty here, and one faculty member in early childhood at UMKC, who's joined us in this endeavor. So they will have a semester here in Johnson County to see what we do, and for us also to observe how they approach some of the same issues. They're especially concerned with developmental remedial kinds of efforts in how we do student support. They're trying to invigorate their economy and to make education more accessible to underserved populations. The State Department sent a representative about two weeks ago, they were going to send another representative, two representatives, and I think May twenty-fourth. They were actually quite impressed by what we're doing, and it's, it's really quite a remarkable experience if you ever want, every, I think it's every Thursday or every other Thursday, there's a series of meetings, but if you want to come at eight in the morning and meet them, there's usually about twenty or thirty faculty in Pakistan that are conversing live with our faculty, and both sides present. It's really quite remarkable.
I think it is quite remarkable. Thank you for that.
Yeah, this program does wonders for furthering our relationship with the State Department, which then benefits a lot of our foreign study programs. It certainly elevates us across the country, and also it helps us to learn about a part of the world that certainly is very important in today's, in today's world. So it's a great program, and Andy and everyone on the academic side have done a great job with this program.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We have no executive session tonight. Is there anything else we need to do? Ready for a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Moved?
Second.
Seconded. My trustee Ingram, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Good meeting.
Two quick questions.[1767.15]